Business will be invocation and we're going to call upon Supervisor Goodman to provide that for us, and then we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance by Supervisor Jeff McClure. So, let's start with that.
Please join me in prayer. Our heavenly Father, we are degrateful for the blessings and opportunities we have in this life, especially here in our great country. We're grateful for the opportunity that we have had of being able to celebrate its birth and the Declaration of Independence. We're grateful for the men and women who have served our country loyally and with honor. May I say blessings upon us as we continue on in their legacy. We're grateful for the rains that have been blessed in our area here in Arizona that we have so desperately needed, and we ask thee and pray that thou will continue to bless us with the nourishment of water throughout our lands. We ask thee that thou will bless the lives and individuals that have been affected by the fires. Watch over them, protect them, bless us as individuals that we may be aware of their needs, and that it is often through our efforts of those around us that they receive thy blessings. I ask thee to bless us all, that as we look forward to opportunities to be kind and respectful to our fellow men, that we may do so. As we now convene this meeting, we ask thy Spirit to be upon us as we conduct the business of our county. Bless each of us as supervisors, that we will work according to our conscience, and may thy Spirit guide us. We pray for these favors and blessings, and do so in the name of thy Son Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Now, if you'd please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. The first item of business is Call to the Public. Consideration and discussion of comments from the public, those wishing to address the Pinal County Board of Supervisors, may appear in person or submit in writing comments which shall be submitted to the clerk of the board by closed business 5:00 p.m. the day prior to the meeting. Comments shall be no more than 250 words. Actions taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or reschedule the matter for further consideration and discussion at a later date. So, first thing I want to do, though, we have item, I believe it's item 16, which is really a study session, which is in reference to a text amendment. And while we, when we come to that item, there won't be any questions or input by the public at that time. It's for the supervisors to be advised by staff that, that study session. So, if you do want to make a comment about item number 16, I'm going to ask that you do it in the, in this portion of the agenda. So, just kind of understand that. We won't be able to answer any of your questions, but we will certainly accept your comments at this point in time, and staff can take note of it. But when we get to item 16, we, we will not have any public comment. But the public comment, if you wish, can be done right now. So, with that being said, first I'll go to Natasha. Do we have any, did you receive any public comments in your office?
Chairman, no, the clerk of the board office has not received any comments from the public.
Okay. So, is there anybody from the public that would like to address the Board of Supervisors at this time? Come forth, give us a name and at least a general location of your residence, and you have three minutes.
It won't take that long.
Okay.
Good morning, Chairman Miller and board members. My name is Nancy Hawkins. I reside at 3251 East Jackpot Lane in Casa Grande, Arizona. When I was here last time, I had it written down, but of course I didn't follow what I'd written down. And so, I forgot to mention, while I was talking about elections, that voter rolls were also a concern. So, I wanted to go just to touch on that again, because I am back to ask what I didn't ask last time, and that is about the voter rolls. A few months ago, at one of your meetings, the subject came up about voter rolls, and it was from a call to the public, a lady was talking about it. And I do remember that Supervisor Goodman even mentioned that he would be interested in this item and this, had an interest in this, as he kept receiving ballots that basically, that he shouldn't have. I know, going door-to-door, I've found discrepancies, and even when you just like, take the voter rolls and just filter them by date of birth, you know, sometimes questions come to mind. So, what I'm asking, and I know you can't respond to me, is I know that all the voter rolls go to the state now, from our counties. So, my question is, and you can't answer, does the county filter them and update them before or after they send them to the state, or is that something that's done only by the state now? And if this is done at the county level, do they have a program or programs that they use for the updating, some sort of a filter system or something? I know that they use like death certificates and that type of thing. And if they do this, how often are they done? Are they done monthly, quarterly? How often? Any answers that you could maybe bring forward in the future to these questions would be helpful? Also, if you have a workshop on elections or something, maybe add voter rolls to it so we can get better educated and find out more information. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you. We'll have staff look into that, so we can answer your question. Come forth.
Good morning, gentlemen, and my name is Dan Culver. I'm here to represent the Saddle Brook Ranch GOP Club and the Saddle Brook GOP Club. Gentlemen, as you're aware, well aware, there is a national, state, and local concern for the integrity and transparency of the national election processes. People want honest and accurate elections to serve all parties, delivering proper and certifiable results. Since the Pinal County Board of Supervisors pays for and oversees the voting processes on behalf of myself and approximately 1,200 registered voters of Saddle Brook and Saddle Brook Ranch, we request the Board of Supervisors ensure to all voters in Pinal County for the 2022 elections, the five following points. One, current voter rolls will be validated to remove those no longer qualified due to death, relocation, or improper residence addresses, according to the law, and ensure Pinal County voter rolls are properly maintained for all future elections. Two, guarantee Pinal County voters that individual ballot paper will have identification and a train of control throughout the voting processes to eliminate any fake or noncompliant ballots being introduced. Three, ensure strong and very viable voter identification processes attend each ballot. Four, guarantee Pinal County voters that the county voting system or systems allows only one vote per voter. And five, please hold public meetings regarding the Pinal County Board of Supervisors' decisions for establishing a convenient number of election precincts required by October 1, 2021, according to State Statute 16-1411A. Excuse me, 16-411A. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak to the Board of Supervisors? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move to item number two, which is a presentation by the Casa Grande Youth Alliance for a Presidential Volunteer Service Award. Mr., Bob Chogan, please come forth and...
Will this, will this work?
This'll work.
Thank you. Chairman Miller, Pinal County Board of Supervisors, it gives me great honor to be here today to represent the Pinal County, or I'm sorry, the Casa Grande Youth Alliance, which is a new project of the Casa Grande Alliance, of which I've been the director for the last couple of years. And I also wanted to mention that I'm a 36-year resident of Pinal County, and I got my start in 1985, living in Oracle and working for the schools in San Manuel and Mammoth for 20 years, before moving to the big city of Casa Grande, and working for the, working for the governor for my last 14 years of my professional career. So, all the time I was in Phoenix, I was very proud to say that I was from Pinal County. So, it really gives me a great pleasure to be here. I'd also like to recognize our Board Chair at the Casa Grande Alliance, Donna McBride, who's here, and then also we have a number of youth alliance members, a mom, and some AmeriCorps members and AmeriCorps Vista members that are serving with us. So, I'd like all of you folks to rise as well. So, these folks are from all over the country, and we're really working on building something new and different in Casa Grande. So, thank you all. One of the changes that we made in the past year was we established a youth alliance, and we're really working on connecting students from all of the middle and high schools together in one organization with chapters in each middle and high school. So, we're really kind of hoping to create kind of a representative body that's dedicated to mobilizing youth to be informed of our community's greatest challenges, and then, and then identifying and delivering service projects that really meet some of those needs in the community. So, as you can see, despite the pandemic, we've had an extraordinarily busy year. We've done lots and lots of projects with the Against Abuse Women Shelters. The youth alliance members put together a prevention Jeopardy game for middle school students that, that many, many middle school students in Casa Grande did. We were part of the Electric Light Tour. We've been doing lots and lots of service projects with road cleanup and City of Casa Grande, Casa Grande Mountain Cleanup. And I think also, it really started off with creating a project where the kids went into Joann's Fabrics in the, in their little classroom in the, in the back, and they made about 800 masks for inclusion in school supply kits for middle school, or for the elementary and middle school students in Casa Grande. So, it's been a long, interesting, fun, challenging year. And through this, all of the youth have been tracking their volunteer service hours, which is culminating in the presentation of this award, which is the Presidential Volunteer Service Award. And we do have a letter, a brief letter from the President that, I'd like to read a couple of things from this. It says, "The American story depends not on any one of us, not on some of us, but on all of us. I congratulate you on taking it upon yourself to contribute to the public good, and I'm proud to present you with the Presidential Volunteer Service Award for your hours of service to this great nation. Throughout our country's history, the American story has been strengthened by those who combine the optimism about what can be with the resilience to turn that vision into reality. I know I'm not alone in recognizing that those who are willing to step up and volunteer in service to community and country are essential to the ongoing work of forming our more perfect union. By sharing your time and passion, you are helping discover and deliver solutions to the challenges we face, solutions that we need now more than ever. We are living in a moment that calls for hope and light and love. Hope for our futures, light to see our way forward, and the love for one another. Through your service, you are providing all three. On behalf of the American people, I extend my heartfelt appreciation to you for your volunteer leadership, and I encourage you to continue to answer the call to service. The country is counting on you." So, we have three award recipients, and the first I'd like to recognize is an AmeriCorps member that has been serving full-time with us this year and staffed primarily a learning hub for kids that, that didn't have internet at home at the Casa Grande Middle School Gymnasium, and that's Elias Rangel, who qualified for the Silver Award as an adult. So, Elias, come on up. So, in addition to the lovely plaque, they get the fancy medallion as well. So, that's kind of cool. So, congratulations. And next, I would like to call to the podium Anika Khan, who served 200 hours as a youth and has been a real leader of our new youth alliance. And just her thoughtfulness and her ability to speak her mind and really say what was there for her to say really made such a difference for our organization for this year. So, Anika. Come on up. And last but not least, our gold recipient is Rachel Lim, and Rachel was there from the very beginning. She's attended all of the meetings. She was, she's, I think she said she was in every picture that we put in this year in review. But she really has been there, and even with Joann's project early on, she was one of the organizers and would go and organize the teams and would help them figure out the sewing machines to help them make masks. So, Rachel Lim, qualified by serving 275 hours, and Rachel. So, thank you. We appreciate, would you like to hear from them?
I would, if any one of them would like to say a few words, and then we're going to ask the recipients to come up for a photo op. And then I would ask that the rest of your group, the entire group show up for a photo op as well. So, if we'll take a minute, but go ahead.
I think we could do that.
Yeah. Think we can?
Hello, I don't know if this is going to work or not, but hello, my name is Rachel Lim, and I am the recipient of, oop, I'm the recipient of the Presidential Service, Volunteer Service Award. I'm so anxious right now, so I can't really talk, I'm sorry, but it's a huge honor to be awarded something really huge like this, aside from like my graduation, but yeah, it's really great. And I, you know, during the entire school year, it was incredibly difficult because of COVID and all the changes that were happening in my life, but despite it all, I tried my very hardest to work hard towards this award, because I knew that it was going to lead up to something great. There were times where like I felt false, and I just felt like, you know, my work wasn't enough, but I think if there's one thing I kind of just want to say for everyone in the room, is that what you're working towards right now will count in the future, and I think that's something that's really important, and I've kind of learned that. And as a result of working so hard throughout the entire school year, I got this. So, yeah, thank you so much. Thank you.
Okay. Anika. Donna, come on.
Rachel just graduated from Union, and she'll be starting school at ASU this fall.
Fantastic.
And that's Anika.
Anika.
And Anika will be a senior at Vista Grande this year.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for the award. I just wanted to say a couple of words about the youth alliance. It's been, the youth alliance definitely been like the only place where I can actually speak my mind and actually work towards stuff that I'm actually passionate about, because Bob actually gave me an outlet to speak on what I'm passionate about. So, I just wanted to thank Bob so much, and the rest of the youth alliance, obviously, and everyone in this room, thank you so much for this opportunity. And yeah, that's basically it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Who's our, who was your other recipient? The adult?
Thank you, Anika. And last but not least, Elias. And Elias has been serving in AmeriCorps with us this past year, and in addition to anchoring the learning hub at Casa Grande Middle School Gymnasium for most of the year, he's also really taken on and adopted the community garden at Casa Grande Middle School, and we've done so much work in the garden, and we've been able to donate so much produce to families of the schools there, and then also we take buckets and buckets of fresh produce over to the shelter. So, that's been a cool thing as well. Elias.
Good morning. My name is Elias Rangel. I am a 26-year-old AmeriCorps NAU member focused on college and career. It's been an absolute blessing to contribute and to give back to the community. Young kid from California, grew up in, you know, farm labor work since I was about in third grade, so coming in and putting my hands in the dirt and, you know, getting some crops growing was a real, a real treat to see. Working with the children, working at the women shelters, the trash pickups, it's absolutely been a blessing. It's been a major part of growing experience in my life. I can't thank everyone in this room, Bob, enough for the opportunity I've been blessed with. Thank you very much, and you know, it's been, it's been a blast giving back to the community.
Great. Well, if the, get the three recipients back up here. You guys are going to get your steps in today. So...
And I would like to just close with saying, I think it's been a real pleasure to present today, and we hope to come before you next year.
Sure.
With many more recipients.
Absolutely. And I, let me just say a couple of words as, as the three come up. The three of you definitely demonstrate great citizenship and great values of volunteering is something that is surly needed in our society all the time. And I think that you, the three of you have demonstrated, the three of you have demonstrated that you do, you do have that ability to give and to work hard. You know, you're, everybody's born with two things, and that nobody can give you, and that's your word and your work ethic, and you, all three have demonstrated that you have that and are using it in a positive way. And so, we're so happy to recognize youth at this, at this stage, because I don't know, we, we honor volunteerism multiple times during the year. So, to see the youth being recognized for it really makes me happy that we're able to build from the bottom. So, just, just keep up the good work. We're very proud of you, and we'll see others here in the future, I hope. Bob, well done, because without your leadership, some of this stuff wouldn't happen, and so thank you. I don't know, does anybody else have anything to offer? If not, let's go down and get a photo.
Turn this metal around, because it's backwards.
Oh, good catch.
Yep, come on, I can do a group first, shot first. Just get you over a little, no, there, just, there you go. There we go. Three, two, and one more here, three, two, and one last one. Three, two, there we go. Very nice. Stay right, reorganize three, and get a shot of just the three.
And then, we wanted one with everyone as well.
And just a little bit, there you go. And right here, three, two, and one more, three, two. I'm sure you're smiling over there. Thank you. And who's about... Who is it that's coming up? Actually, go right here. There you go. There you go. And looks great. And right here, three, two, one more. Oh, yeah, get in there, get on the end there.
And, and the mom and the board chair are welcome as well.
And right here, three, two, one more. Very nice. Thank you.
Do we have to give Leo a medal now, too? Do you get a medal?
No.
Give these people a second, too. Okay, that brings us to item number three on the agenda, which is the County Manager's Report, informational only. Mr. Lou.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and with the spirit of excellent service, as you know, a couple of months ago, we kicked off a program of peer-to-peer recognition, where we recognize county employees. We've done one video on it, for those that exemplify the values and core culture of our county. So, in the future, we've got probably three or four really good ones in the queue, and in the future, if okay with the board, I'd like to highlight those in the County Manager's Report in the next coming months.
Absolutely.
That's all I got today. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Lou? Seeing none, brings us to item number four, Purchasing Division. Ms. McBride.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, and members of the board. I'm Shawna McBride, your Purchasing Manager for Pinal County, and this is your Purchasing Division Report for July 7, 2021. First up today, the board is requested to approve the following new contract awards. We recommend Dance &amp; Construction be awarded a contract for the Acasa Grande Complex Administration Building A renovation project as the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, at a cost of $1,225,640. This contract will be used by the Facilities Department. We also recommend a contract be awarded to Casa Grande Valley Newspapers for the legal publication services, beginning August 1 through July 31, 2022. This contract will be used countywide. Next up, the board is requested to approve the following contract amendments. First, we recommend approval of Amendment Number Three for pavement maintenance materials to exercise the optional extension period with the following suppliers. Ergon Asphalt and Emulsions, Pavement Restoration, Inc., Viasun Corporation, Western Emulsions, Inc., and Wright Asphalt Products Company. This contract is used by Public Works. Next, we recommend approval of Amendment Four for asphalt pulverization and soil stabilization services to exercise the optional extension period with the following suppliers. Asphalt Busters, Inc., and WSP, Inc. This contract is used by Public Works. And last, we have some cooperative purchases over $250,000 that we are requesting the board approve today. Requisition 161985 in the amount of $400,000 to Voyager Fleet Systems. This is for fuel cards for light-duty vehicles for Public Works, and requested by the Fleet Department. Requisition 161987 for $500,000. This is also for Voyager Fleet Systems, and this is fuel for light-duty vehicles requested by the Fleet Department. And requisition 161988 in the amount of $900,000 to Synergy Petroleum for diesel fuel, requested by Public Works. And that's the last of your Purchasing Division Report for July 7, 2021.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Supervisor Kavanaugh.
Thank you for that. I just have a question about the legal publication services. Previously, it was the San Manuel Miner and their associated papers, because they were the lowest bidder.
Yes.
And so, were they the lowest bidder this time, or was it the Casa Grande?
Cost-wise, they were the lowest bidder. This, we looked at the lowest and best options for the county, so we looked at cost, and we also looked at the number of publications... Cost-wise, they were the lowest bidder. This, we looked at the lowest and best options for the county. So we looked at cost and we also looked at the number of publications, the number of subscribers, how many times they publish. There were various questions that we asked as well that we utilized in our award decision today.
Okay. And then does, I don't know what the penetration of the other newspaper is into that area. Does that, is that a number that you have?
I don't have that number with me into the San Manuel area specifically.
The entire copper corridor. I don't know how the distribution works for the Casa Grande dispatch.
I don't have that with me at this time.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Ms. McBride? Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Purchasing Division Report dated July 7th, 2021.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. I just have it.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
You, too.
Okay. Brings us to item number five, Consent Items. All items indicated by an asterisk will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless the Board Member or the County Manager or a member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. So does anybody have anything they want pulled from the consent agenda on the Board? County Manager? Public? Seeing none? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd make, like to make a motion that we approve Consent Items A through AL as presented.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. I just have it. Thank you very much. Get rid of a lot of sheets here. Okay, I want to recess the Board of Supervisors meeting. And we're going to open the meeting of the Desert Vista Sanitary District Board of Directors Meeting. So get to that page. The first item of business is discussion or approval or disapproval of minutes from the November 18th, 2020 Desert Vista Sanitary District Board Directors Meeting. Anybody having questions about those minutes? Seeing none? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes, item number one, dated November 18th, 2020.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. I just have it. Brings us to item number two, which is a public hearing. Is there a presentation? Is anybody going to pres, oh, there she is. Good morning, Pamela.
Good morning, Chairman, Members of the Board. Pamela Villarreal, Special Service Administrator. This is a public hearing for the 2021-2022 budget for Desert Vista Sanitary District. And as you can see up there on your screen, we will not be levying this year for the district. We still have funds available, so there's no need for us to levy. Nothing has really changed. Our insurance went up a little bit, but we have money, a balance that will cover that. So there's no need for us to levy this year.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Pamela? If not, I'd like to open up the public hearing at this time. Anybody in the public want to question or ask anything about this sanitary district? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Desert Vista Sanitary District Budget as presented.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. I just have it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I've adjourned the Desert Vista Sanitary District Board Meeting, and I'm going to open up the Flood Control District Meeting. First item of business is the discussion, approval or disapproval of the minutes of May 26th, 2021, the Board of Directors Flood Control District Meeting. Anybody have any questions or comment about the minutes from last year? Are you seeing none? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes dated May 26th, 2021, for the Board of Directors Flood Control District Meeting.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. I just have it. Thank you very much. The second item of business will be a public hearing, but we have a presentation by Chris Wanamay. Oh, you don't look like Chris.
Good morning, Chairman.
Good morning.
Angie Woods, Director of Office Management and Budget. This is the first public hearing this morning, truth and taxation hearing, that I will have presented before you in adherence with ARS Section 48, 254. It's a public hearing regarding the tax rate for the Flood Control District. The language on our screen here is the language required by state statute, and it's stating that our county, by adopting a tax rate of .1693, we will be increasing secondary property taxes in the amount of $95,778. And really what that means is the difference between property tax on a home that is valued at $100,000. If we were to take it to the TNT rate, the tax would be $16.53 versus the rate that we're choosing, the, the tax would be $16.93, just the difference between the two. I have no further presentation if you don't have any questions.
Anybody have any questions for Andy? Okay, seeing none? This is, is a public hearing, so I want to open up the public hearing at this time. Anybody from the public have any comments or questions about this item? Seeing none? Public hearing is closed. Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Truth and Taxation Hearing Notice of a Tax Increase dated Wednesday, July 7th, 2021.
Can I have a second? Or do I have a, I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay.
Roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry. Roll call. Right after I asked you, is it roll call? And you told me yes. And I didn't do it anyway. So this requires a roll call. Natasha.
Supervisor Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Supervisor McClure.
Aye.
Supervisor Sertie.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Goodman.
Aye.
And Chairman Miller.
Aye.
That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Okay. So I adjourned the Flood Control District Meeting. And we'll open up the Library District Meeting. First item of business is discussion, approval or disapproval of the minutes from June 23rd, 2021, District Library Meeting. Do I have a motion unless there's a question or a concern about the minutes? Seeing none? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes dated June 23rd, 2021, of the Board of Directors Library District Meeting.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. I just have it. Okay, so now we have another public hearing and discussion, approval, disapproval of the adoption of the fiscal year 2021 to 2022 tax levy. Angie.
Hello again.
Okay.
This is the same type of hearing that we just held with the library, I mean, sorry, the Flood Control District. Same statute, 48, 254. This is the same language that you saw be a statute. This truth and taxation hearing, we're proposing to adopt a rate of .0965 for the Library District, which means a $52,136 tax increase. And there again, if we would adopt the truth and taxation rate, it would be the difference for a property value to 100,000, the difference between $9.46 versus $9.65. I have no other.
Okay. Any questions for Angie? Seeing none? I'll open the public hearing at this time. Does anybody from the public want to comment or have questions about this tax rate? Seeing none? Public hearing is closed. Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Truth and Taxation Hearing Notice of Tax Increase for the Library District dated Wednesday, July 7th, 2021.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Can I have a roll call?
Supervisor Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Supervisor McClure.
Aye.
Supervisor Sertie.
Aye.
Vice Chairman.
Aye.
And Chairman Miller.
Aye.
That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. So I've adjourned the Library District Board Meeting, and we'll be moving on to Public Health and Services District. First item of business is, oh, consent. So we have, number one is consent items. All items indicated by an asterisk will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless the Board Member, County Manager, or a member of the public objects at the time the item is called. Does anybody have anything they want removed from the consent items A or B? County Manager? Public? Seeing none? Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent items A and B as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. I just have it. Public Health Services District Board Meeting is closed. Okay, so does that bring us to, was that far down the list here? Item 16? Or 10, I mean. Item 10. So this is discussion, approval, disapproval of the Penale County Healthcare and Benefits Trust Declaration. Mary Ellen is going to join us via telephonically. So I'll give everybody, is she, is she on?
Mary Ellen.
Mary Ellen, can you hear us?
I can't.
Good morning, Mary Ellen.
Good evening, everyone. Chairman Miller, Members of the Board, I'm Mary Ellen Shepherd, interim Deputy County Manager and HR Director. My apologies for not being there in person today. I appreciate your time and attention. Today, we are seeking your approval of the Penale County Health Benefits Trust Declaration. And if I may, first call attention to the change in the title from Penale County Healthcare and Benefits Trust Declaration to Penale County Health Benefits Trust Declaration. Chairman Miller, Members of the Board, ARS 11981 requires placement of all funds in a trust if a county establishes a self-insurance program for the purposes of payment of benefits, losses, or claims. This trust declaration has been prepared to ensure compliance with that statute. As you all are aware, the county implemented our self-funded benefits plan effective July 1 of this year. The statute requires the following, that we designate a risk management consultant or insurance administrator. This is satisfied by Section 4.4 of the Penale County Health Benefits Trust Declaration. The statute also requires that the trust shall be administered by at least five joint trustees, of whom not more than one may be a member of the governing body and not more than one may be an employee. This is satisfied by Section 3.1 of the declaration. Trustees must be bonded. This is satisfied by Section 3.2 of the declaration. Stop-loss provision must be incorporated in the trust document. This is satisfied by Section 4.6 of the declaration. An annual audit performed by an external auditor. This is satisfied by Section 4.5 of the declaration. And finally, statute prohibits making expenditures from the trust for any purpose not specified by ARS 11981. This is satisfied by Section 2.3 of the declaration. The declaration has been prepared to comply with ARS 11981. In addition, it was drafted to ensure clarity regarding roles, outlining that the trustees provide general oversight of the trust fund and serve in advisory capacity to the Board of Supervisors. The role of the Board of Supervisors and their designees is preserved in this declaration with respect to developing, implementing, and managing health and wellness programs for county employees and beneficiaries and management of county staff or consultants responsible for day-to-day operations. Your consideration and approval of this declaration would be appreciated. Any questions?
Any question for Mary Ellen at this time? Seeing none? Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Penale County Healthcare and Benefits Trust Declaration document as presented.
I have a motion. Do I?
Wait.
If we can make that change that Mary Ellen mentioned in reference to the title.
To the title.
And it's on the screen for you under motion.
To prove it presented. Okay. Mr. Chair.
Allow you to do it again.
Yeah, pull it all back. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Penale County Health Benefits Trust Declaration document as presented.
Does that work?
I said it. Okay. I read it. The Penale County Health Benefits Trust Declaration document.
Okay. I have a motion.
In that case.
Can I get a second?
I'll second that one, yes.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. I just have it. Thank you. Thank you, Mary Ellen.
Thank you.
Brings us to item number 11, Discussion, Approval, or Disapproval for the Amendment of an Intergovernment Agreement pursuant to Section X Point C. I have Mark Lamb down as the presenter, and I see him in the back. Is there anything here that you want to just bring forth about this agenda item?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisors, I'm not real savvy as to what this is. This is through the Florence School District. There's grant monies that have been allocated for school resource officers. I don't know what change was. resource officers. I don't know what change was made under the amendment, whether it was a minor change, major change. I honestly, I do not know, and I apologize, I don't have that information. But all of those, school resource officers are assigned through the Florence School District because of the grant that they got.
Okay. Any questions?
I just know it's been harder and harder to get school resource officers, so I need a little bit of help, so.
Okay. Thank you for that comment. Any questions?
No, I, another comment is that, you know, we, this is another way that we can increase our law enforcement across the county, in particular, some of the areas where we are shy on that, and then put them in front of our young men and young women to where that relationship, I think this type of a program is so vital, especially in our society today.
Mr. Chairman, supervisor, I agree, and I do know what this is. So they originally received a grant for so many positions, we were not able to fill all of those positions. Now we're able to, we're adding one more deputy on for that, those positions they had for grant funding.
Okay.
Initially, we told them we couldn't fill all of them, and we've been trying to help them step up to that, add more.
Okay. Well, thank you for that brief explanation. Anything else?
Will this, Mr. Chairman, will this shift one of your road deputies to a school?
What we've done is we've gone to you, we've come to you, the board, Mr. Chairman, supervisor, we've come to you guys, the board, and had those positions added on to our staffing levels. Right now, those are being paid, but we will have to, when that funding ends, we'll have to look at it as a county as to whether we continue those positions. They're being added on to our current staffing levels.
Okay.
Did that answer your question?
Maybe I'll, we'll talk later.
So, to make it simple, Mr. Chairman, if we have 220 sworn, this makes 221. You, and then the board and the county would need to be willing to pay for that when that grant funding does end. We would need to address that.
Mr. Chair, does this follow along, thank you, does this follow along with the, we approved your budget and added 12 officers or something like?
Mr. Chairman, supervisor, I don't believe this is outside of, this is a separate position.
Okay. Okay. Everybody good? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number 11 as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Ayes have it. Thank you. Thank you, Sheriff. Oh, item number 12, we'll have a public hearing component to it. Presenter Celeste Garza. Good morning, Celeste.
Good morning, Chairman Miller, members of the board. Celeste Garza with Public Works here for item 12, an abandonment of 50 feet of right-of-way for a master plan community in Traja del Oro. This is located in the Gold Canyon area in Section 30. The community is surrounded by state land property. This will be future phases of Phase 2 of that community, in which you'll see the final plat come through in August. We have notified the local utility companies, and they are in agreement. The petitioner did get state land signature on the abandonment documents, and this will not compromise any legal access to any surrounding parcels, which is state land. So I can, here's a picture of the future master plan community. So Unit 2, Phases 1A, 2, 2A, and 3A are adjacent this 50 feet.
Okay. Any?
I can answer any questions.
Celeste? Natasha, does, do we have somebody that has a question? Telephonic appearance is, if questions only?
Yes, that's the applicant. He's available telephonically if there's questions.
Oh, he's available, okay, okay. So we have no questions, so I don't, or at least I don't see any. So, do I have a motion?
I think there's a public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, did you open the public hearing?
I did not. I did not. Shame on me. Doc my pay. So, let me open up the public hearing. Come on, come on. I'm closing the public hearing. All right, thank you. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 070721-RD20-127 that orders the abandonment and extinguishment of an easement comprising a portion of right-of-way 50 feet west, wide located at Section 30 Township 1, Range 10 East of the Healan Salt River Basin, Meridian, Penale County, Arizona.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Ayes have it. Thank you. Brings us to item number 13. It also has a public hearing component to it, and also has a roll call vote to set everybody straight, especially me.
Good morning again, Chairman, board members. Angie Woods, Director of Office Management and Budget. Purpose of the agenda item this morning is obviously a truth and taxation hearing. Secondly, adoption of budget schedules in accordance with state statute. I do have a short presentation, if you'd like for me to go through that.
Sure.
So I came before you about three weeks ago with a total budget of $734,501,764. Since that tentative budget, there have been several, not significant, but some reallocations within I wanted to mention. So within the piece of the pie there that is our special revenue, we've reallocated about $230,000 to grants for the Clerk of the Superior Court, PCSO, the library district. We also included the IGA that was number 11 for the Sheriff's Office in the reallocation. It didn't change the percentage of the pie to our special revenue, but I did want to give that a mention. In the area of the general fund, there were some reallocations made there as well. We made some adjustments to one-time funds for some projects within departments, some decreasing and some just rolling forward from this year to next year, just timing issues. We did make a change to PCSO's budget for an administrative position for their Maricopa complex, the location there in Maricopa. They originally did not include that in their budget request, and after opening, realized they needed an administrative position there. We did do some reallocation for District 3 for staffing there in Supervisor Miller's office, and then we changed some compensation to reallocate some dollars for critical retainment. Mary Ellen will speak on that in, I believe it's the next agenda item.
Correct.
Any questions on any of those reallocations? And again, it didn't change the distribution of our budget whatsoever. There were no changes on total revenues. This is exactly the same pie chart that I showed you three weeks ago. Questions there? The distribution of our funds, there again, I explained the areas that we did make some changes in the criminal justice, law enforcement, and in the general government, but overall the percentage has changed, did not change, the dollar amounts changed very slightly. I do have a couple of slides here for projects within the county. This first slide is a brief, high level of some of the projects, facilities, projects that will be, that are slated in this calendar year's budget. I don't have specifics on any of those, these projects, but I do have staff here if there are questions about any of these. Some of these are major projects as far as, you know, a brand-new building for our medical examiner, brand-new building for our public defense services, and our public fiduciary, renovation for our Casa Grande complex. So I do have Archie here if you'd like any further clarification there.
I'm good. Everybody good?
Included in the transportation projects.
One second, Angie.
Sure.
Supervisor.
On that list, I didn't see the renovation for the Coolidge office. Was that in the previous budget, or is that in this one?
It is, it is in this budget, yes. It did not include it on this slide since I included really the major, major projects.
Okay.
But it is included in our budget.
Didn't make the cut.
Sorry about that. From Public Works, we have some transportation projects. These are major projects. Staff, again, is here to answer any questions that you would have on these major projects.
That's good.
Okay. These are flood control projects that are built into the fiscal year 2122 projects. I don't have specific information. I believe there's a member from Public Works' Flood Control District available for any questions here.
Anybody have any questions on this? That's good.
And lastly, these are the airport projects that are built into the fiscal year 2122 projects. Some, they're at Samuelwell Air Park, and then the Penale Air Park. And there again, if you have questions, I do have staff here available to answer those questions.
Any questions on the airport projects? Seeing none?
Here again is the general fund revenue budget. Nothing has changed here revenue-wise. I can say that since our last discussion, we've received some of our allocations from VLT, state shared revenues, and countywide sales tax, all very positive, not changed the course from when I last spoke with you. So I didn't make any reallocations here. And then the distribution of our general fund. Here again, some slight changes to the numbers, but the overall percentages didn't change. And there again, I spoke to those changes a little bit earlier. There's any questions? All right, so this year's final budget for fiscal year 2122, $734,501,764. Overall budget increased by $164,146, I'm sorry, $164,146,302, primarily due to increases in grant funding. It's not limited to the American Rescue Plan Act, but we do have other grant funding built in there for COVID-19 efforts. I did want to mention that we will have an adoption of the tax rate and levies, and we will hold those no later than August 16. We're waiting for some of the cities and towns to submit those to us. If there's no other questions, here again is a notice of truth and taxation hearing. Just like the other two hearings, this is the statutory language. The statutory language comes from Section 42-17107 of Arizona Revised Statute. The increase in primary property taxes for the entire county is $397,876. If we're comparing a home with a valuation of 100,000, the rate that we've chosen, it would be a three, or the rate that we're adopting our budget on, the taxation would be $369. If we were adopting a rate at the truth and taxation rate, the taxation would be $367.55. So the difference between those is why we need to address our public. Any questions?
Any questions, comments? Everybody good? Okay, I'm going to open up the public hearing.
Thank you.
Okay. I do have, looks up here to have a couple people that want to speak on the public hearing side of this thing. So if you'll come forth, give us your name and address and.
My name, just, where are you?
You can pull that down just a little bit if you'd like.
No.
Oh, okay.
My glass.
Okay, okay. I just want to make it easier on you.
My name is Dr. Deborah Banks. I live at 126 West Saddleway in Johnson Ranch, and my zip code is 85143. Do you need any other information?
No, that's sufficient. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, and I appreciate having the time to address some, it was very unclear to me as to why our taxes were being raised. Now, if I have this right, and please correct me, that the driving forces are going to be the establishments that have already gone up, increase staff, and road improvement. Is that correct?
Who wants to answer that question? I'm going to look at Mr. Lou for guidance on that one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I can answer that. And all related to the hearing that we're currently in on the truth and taxation. First, just as an overall education for that, that particular truth and taxation rate would say that in the entire county, the levy on existing properties would be exactly the same. Of course, for every individual property, it would change depending on what the valuation did on your particular property. And so as the county compiles the budget as a whole, there are factors related to increased staffing for increased needs with the population increases, increased homes, increased businesses, et cetera. And so, to your point, everything that is in the county budget has an influence in one way, shape, or form on what the tax rate ultimately ends up being. In this particular case, we're looking at the primary property tax, which is the general fund discretionary, which forms the pie that Angie had just shown of the distribution of those expenditures. The rate that was decided, which is a six-cent decrease from the current rate, 379 to 369, 375 to 369, was determined to be, we wanted to continue to lower the rate to make it more competitive. Part of the discussion that occurred, why it didn't go all the way to what the truth and taxation rate would be, which would be the 367.55 that you see on the screen, was because there were some considerations related mainly to inflation and current inflation that we're experiencing and potential future inflation, which does drive up prices relative to wages and to our contractors and supplies, et cetera. And so, part of the discussion in the tentative budget was that we didn't want to take it all the way down because we wanted to still address that in one way, shape, or form. As you see, 0.39% isn't actually the rate of current inflation, as you know. It's more trending at 4% to 5% currently. So that was part of the reason, but to your point, the entire budget and the entire operations and the increasing needs of the county influences that as well.
Thank you very much. My question is, a little nervous asking this, because I don't want it to appear to be contentious, but why aren't the taxes? But why aren't the taxpayers informed about all this? So that when we get to these meetings on truth and taxation, that people come in with some knowledge? I don't understand. It's like, well, we're going to have a meeting to discuss. And there were, I believe, two meetings set up for truth and taxation. And so far, two of your items, which I do approve, but never had any input, never had any information come my way on the level of floodplains and the other. Why can't we have a more transparent process in raising or lowering taxes?
Well, Ms. Banks, I don't want to... I don't know the dates, but we have discussed this. This is probably the third or fourth meeting that we've discussed tax rate, budgets, levies, pie charts in for the last couple of months. I know that we've had a number of presentations. Can anybody tell me the exact number? I can't remember. But we had a long discussion by the Board of Supervisors about the rate. And so I don't know. I don't know how else to inform the public other than the same way we've been informing the public all the time on all of our meetings. The agendas are available. The agendas can be accessed at any time. So this isn't the first time we've discussed this. We've discussed all of this in multiple meetings in the past. And that's what I can tell you. And I don't know if I have... I don't have the dates in front of me.
I heard that. And you have now a very good newsletter that goes out. That newsletter could have had a statement in there of briefly what the board was going to cover. I... I'm going to leave it at that.
Okay, well, we appreciate your input, and we will try to do better on our communications.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else that would like to address this during this public hearing portion of this item?
Good morning. My name is Jenny Sebais. I live in Oracle, a very upcoming rural community. We don't have very many amenities. Streetwise, there are no lights on our streets. Some of them aren't even paved. And I'd like to know, is this tax increase on the property values of 100,000? Just 100,000? Or will it be like our house is valued at maybe 300,000? So it's $369 increase times three? Is that it?
Yes, we use the 100 as a... For simple math, that's for every hundred... For every 100,000 on that home, it would be times that new rate of 369, which is a six cents drop.
Mr. Chair, that's also assessed value, not market value.
That's assessed value, not market value. And thank you, Supervisor McClure. And I... So I don't... I mean, I don't have your tax stuff in front of me, so I don't really... I can't answer your specific question.
So are all the homes going to be assessed again?
Yes, everything is assessed annually, every year.
Okay. Our taxes are pretty high right now. We're paying like 1,400 every six months. So I consider this a pretty large increase for us. As it is, you know, we live on a limited income. So it would be nice if we could see something out of our tax increase, like maybe streetlights. I know that there's a lot of senior citizens living in Oracle that complain they can't go anywhere at night because the streets are so dark. So I think that, you know, something like that would be an improvement for Oracle.
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor?
The explanation the chairman gave might not have been entirely clear. The... It's 100,000 assessed value based on the rate that we are currently charging or will charge is $369. And the county attorney can correct me or if I'm wrong. The difference that we're talking about with this truth in taxation notice, I think that anything above $367.55 has to be noticed through truth in taxation. So we're not increased... There's no increase of $369. I think the... Even though we lowered the rate, the amount of taxes will increase because of property values and other things. So your difference per 100,000 is $1.45, not 369. It's a buck, $1.45, is that right?
Yeah. Thank you. That's a lot clearer.
So if your assessed value is 200,000, not your retail value, your proper taxes will go up $1, $2.90 per year.
Okay.
Well, I've said my little speech, so thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you.
Supervisor Goodman?
Yes, Angie, if you guys... I have a question. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Let's do a comparison between last year, okay? Has the assessments gone up much in the last year on these home values?
It would depend on the property itself. Countywide, yes, the assessments, the net assessed valuation across the entire county.
Has increased.
Has increased. But I cannot tell you if, you know, one property value has increased, what percentage it is. By statute, the net assessed valuation cannot increase more than the tax base.
The 5%.
5%.
Okay, so let's go off of a house that's 300,000, yet last year still has a similar assessment this year.
Yes, the max it would increase is 5% over the 300,000.
But let's assume that the assessment's still the same. 300,000 last year, 300,000 this year. We went from 3.71, correct? Down to 3.69, correct? Would it be safe to assume that in that scenario, there would be a decrease in the property tax?
No, sir. The... The increase is per 100,000 dollars, it's $1.45. So we're talking three times that. So $3 and... Well, let's see, I can't do the math in my head, but we're not talking about a large percentage increase. For Ms. Banks, I did do a calculation for a home. And with an increase of 5%, the total taxation from all three of our districts was $45, with a 5% increase on a $300,000 home.
Okay.
$45.
Okay.
I can send you that calculation as well.
That'd be great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Thank you, Angie. Is there anybody else that would like to comment on this public hearing portion of this item? Okay, seeing none. I'll close the public hearing. And the board's pleasure. Do I have a motion? Oh, yeah, do you have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve in accordance with the ARS 42-17104 and the ARS 42-17107. Truth in Taxation Hearing Resolution Number 070721-01-PZB, BPCB, for the adoption of the Pinal County Fiscal Year 2021 through 2022 budget that beginning July 1st, 2021, ending June 30th of 2022, in accordance with ARS 42-17105, in the amount of $734,501,764, with a tax rate of 3.6900.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. This requires a roll call vote. Ms. Natasha?
Supervisor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Supervisor McClure?
Aye.
Supervisor Sertie?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Goodman?
Aye.
And Chairman Miller?
Aye.
That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Okay. Brings us to item number 14, Discussion, Approval, or Disapproval of a Fiscal Year 2021/2022 Pinal County Employee Compensation Plan Across-the-Board Salary Adjustments. And I believe Mary Ellen is going to participate telephonically again.
Yes, Chairman. Mary Ellen?
Thank you, Chairman Miller, members of the board. Mary Ellen Shepard, interim deputy county manager and HR director. Thank you for this opportunity to bring before you the proposed fiscal year 2021/2022 Pinal County Employee Compensation Plan. This plan is made up of two parts. The first provides for across-the-board increases for all eligible employees. Consistent with the approach in recent years, we are recommending that all eligible employees receive an across-the-board increase of 2.5%. Although counties and cities approach compensation differently, a review of our comparators and the amounts anticipated to be given for salary increases showed on average, 2.5% is comparable. However, it should be known that a number of our comparators also give merit increases to deserving employees. Eligibility and implementation criteria for this plan is the same as in recent years. I do want to call to your attention an exception regarding performance appraisals consistent with what we did last year. Due to the impact COVID had on the workplace, including the need to telework, adjust work priorities, our ability to complete accurate fair appraisals has been somewhat compromised. Therefore, we're recommending that appraisals only be required for those who are underperforming and when an employee completes their probationary status or first six months of employment. Again, this is the approach we took for last year's plan. The plan does include language encouraging supervisors to continue to engage in meaningful performance management practices and does require supervisors to establish performance goals for this fiscal year so we can plan for appraisals to be completed moving forward. The second section of the plan addresses critical recruitment and retention. At the work session of the board held on March 19th, 2021, we spoke about the importance of establishing compensation policies and practices to better position the county to recruit and retain employees critical to the successful achievement of strategic goals and priorities. Specifically, we spoke about continuing what works to include across-the-board increases consistent with the market, controlled discretion in order to address inequities, critical retention and compression, to consider pay for performance and merit pay, and most importantly, or at least equally importantly, consider increasing pay flexibility so we can be responsive to our need to retain and recruit critical employees. In furtherance of these objectives, this plan provides for limited discretion, enabling the county manager and elected officials to, number one, resolve critical recruitment and retention issues that require agility in order to be responsive in a timely, productive, and cost-effective way. We spoke about losing employees to our competitors simply because we weren't able to make a counter offer in a timely way. Number two, this plan allows for implementing pay grade changes and market and equity adjustments necessary to encourage recruitment and retention and maintain consistency in the county's market position. Number three, address internal pay equity issues based upon relevant qualifications and/or performance. And then number four, reward high performers when supported by documented evidence that distinguishes the employee from peers for having contributed to a program or practice which has had a significant, quantifiable positive impact on the operations of the county, the department, or our community. The plan establishes requirements which must be fulfilled in order to have a request considered. Requests must go through County Human Resources and our Office of Management and Budget to the county manager for consideration. Requests from elected offices will be reviewed in collaboration with the county manager. And at any time, either the county manager or the elected official can come to the board. What makes this year's plan different from last year's approach is the approximately 0.5% of personnel funds set aside for this purpose will be pooled versus distributed to each department and elected office. This approach helps to ensure the limited dollars allocated for this purpose are able to go towards the highest priority needs, that the solutions aren't limited by solely what an office or a department would be able to fund when the allocation is separated out, and that the ability to address critical issues will exist throughout the year. This approach also allows departments to reallocate funds in their own budgets to address critical recruitment and retention needs. We are currently working on a number of these critical needs to include the drafting specialist in the assessor's office. We are working on new pay grades, position titles and pay to better position the assessor's office to hire and retain the workforce that are responsible for creating parcel numbers, which is of critical importance to the county's growth and development. We are looking at critical issues in the clerk of the court and the staffing there that impact not only on her office, but on a county attorney's office, public defense, and the judicial branch. We're looking at positions in fleet, as well as positions, particularly deputies and detention officers and their salary ranges in PCSO. And just so you all are aware, I did reach out to many of our elected officials, the sheriff's office, the county attorney's office, the assessor, the recorder, the treasurer, the judicial branch, the school superintendent. And forgive me if I'm missing one of our key electeds to discuss the plan and to ensure their comfort level and support moving forward with the plan as developed and documented for your consideration. By approval of this plan, we anticipate being able to complete much of the needed compensation changes, as well as going back to our work session, continuing what we know works. And if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Are there any questions for Mary Ellen at this time? Okay. Sure? Supervisor Kavanaugh?
So recently I received an email from an employee who said.
There you go.
Recently I received an email from an employee who said that he was leaving Pinellas County for a better job at better pay. So I called the employee and asked him to give me more details and he said that he was taking another job at around 12% higher pay. And he didn't have to go to Phoenix or Chandler. He's, he's employed here in Florence. And so it's important that, to realize that we are competing not just regionally, but locally for employees. And I saw on the agenda today, we had a retirement for a sheriff's deputy. At last count, we are already short 24 deputies and the sheriff has asked for at least 10 more. And I know there are other reasons to leave policing these days, but we should not leave poor salary and inflexibility on the table as one of those reasons that deputies leave. And I've stated before, and I'll say it again, our sheriff deputies keep the county safe and continue to do their jobs without seeking fame or glory. They just do their job day in and day out. They respond to domestic violence calls without hesitation, knowing these calls are the most deadly for police officers. They respond when there's burglary, robbery, rape, or homicide. The men and women who serve as our deputies have taken it upon themselves to keep our society civil and just. And in spite of the obstacles they face from within and without, they keep doing their jobs honorably. So why should we increase the pay and be more flexible with civil service employees as well? Well, because we need people to serve in these government positions. It's a bad thing if your building project is delayed months because the planning department doesn't have enough people to examine your plans because they've left for more attractive salary. So I support this, the plan, both to increase salaries for, for our deputies and base salaries for others, and the flexibility to, to use these merit increases to retain employees.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Kavanaugh? Anybody else have any questions or comments? Seeing none, board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve item 14 as presented.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mary Ellen.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the board.
Okay. Brings us to item number 15, which is a work session, a discussion only, on case PZC 003-21. So who is Steve Abram and Lester Chow, or the names that are at the bottom of this agenda? Who's presenting?
Thank you, board members. Today's, go back one page. There we go. Today's zoning ordinance text amendment, PZC 00321, is a zoning regulations amendment that will amend the accessory building standards in our rural zones. So this is for acre, for properties that are acre and larger. There's approximately six zones that we're dealing with today. And to cut to the chase and basically tell you what it's all about is that this code amendment, as the codes are written right now, that if you have an accessory building, it can only be 20 feet tall and that's for anywhere on the property. This code amendment basically allow buildings that are 25 feet in height when located in the main buildable area. So to kind of explain this diagram here, property line, this would be approximately four feet from a property line. Main building setback would be here and where you could get about 25-foot accessory structures. This came about through some discussions we had from a builder of structures and accessory buildings in, in and around the county and some other folks as well. After, man, about six, six to eight meetings, we talked about some of the options to accomplish this goal, to get a little extra height in your building, primarily due to the desire to put an RV in the structure, have a certain pitched roof line, and then be able to have a garage door opener on that building so the garage can, can be used. So after taking a look at it, I think a healthy compromise was reached where as long as you meet the main building setbacks, where the building height can be up to 30 feet in height, this accessory structure can be 25 feet in total. So another illustration would be this. So if you're within or outside the four-foot setback area, you have the one building there with that pitched roof at 20. Then once you meet that main building setback, you get up to 25. We had a neighborhood meeting. We had a work session with the planning commission. We had a public hearing with the planning commission and the commission unanimously recommended approval of the zoning text amendment. We've had zero input from our neighborhood outreach and public outreach efforts to this date. And the commission recommended it as written in your report here with no changes. So this is just a work session today to give folks the opportunity to continue with that process and see the item on an agenda. And I am available if you have any questions.
Any questions at this time? Comment is, I'm glad we're there finally.
Indeed.
My phone lines continues to burn up with this one. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, Steve. Brings us to item number 16, which is a work session, discussion only, of a zoning regulation amendment, on the zoning code amendment. To begin the process. Evan? There you are.
Mr. Chair, Board of Supervisors? Good morning.
Your name, for the record, your name?
Yeah, Evan Evangelopoulos with planning.
Thank you.
This is an initiation of a zoning regulations amendment of chapter 2360, the multi-purpose community master plan. That's MP, MCMP, MCMP in the zoning code. And there are several changes proposed by the Arizona State Land Department. They are the applicant. So, so this is a discussion of the proposed changes. It's countywide. As a reminder, this section of the code was initially proposed for the ATESA development and developed. So this is an opportunity for the county to make it a little bit more general and to make it apply, to let it apply to more, to make it more flexible so it applies to more projects throughout the county. We will, the changes are minor in the first three sections of the, of the, of the chapter. It changes the minimum number of certain characteristics for large multifamily developments. The extent and the type of the central component, there's something that's called central component in, in this section. The types of uses and minimum required number of, of different uses, extent of comprehensive plan employment, land use designations, distance from single-family residential, and other changes or considerations directed from the Board of Supervisors. This is just general. This is the process. We had a neighborhood meeting on July 1st. There was almost no attendance for the text amendment meeting. So we had no feedback on that one. And this is the work session today. There's a Planning and Zoning Commission Public Hearing on July 15th. And there's the Board of Supervisors Public Hearing, the adoption on August 25th. And it'll be effective a month later. So these are the changes. I'll go one by one. It adds, it requires certain characteristics for these, for these kinds of, for these kind of developments. The central components, the change that's proposed requires it to be at least 1,000 acres, which can occupy at least half of the project. If, because minimum size of a project is 2,000 acres in this category. And it adds open space as one of the central, central component options. Also, the next change adds employment centers as one of the integrated communities required under this section. Another interesting change is it makes it more flexible. It changes employment requirements from 75 to 50% of the total project area. It removes, the changes remove the one-mile requirement from a single-family residential development. That was a requirement, as far as I know, in the ATESA development. So to make it more flexible, that is removed. The development, some minor word changes. Instead of anchored, it used the word contains. And open space is added along with industrial as one of the central components, as the central component of the project. And finally, it repeats in essence, at least, that a project is required to have one of the three, at least three of the following elements, coordinated residential, commercial, industrial, or public facility uses. So these are the changes that the code that are proposed. So after this, I am open to any questions you might have regarding these text amendment changes.
Any questions for Evan at this point?
Mr. Chairman? Yes, thank you. I don't have a question about the changes, but I do see on D, it says development includes planned multimodal transportation systems. Does that mean road and sidewalk?
Road, bicycle, pedestrian, combination of all of the above, yes. And that's a, that's a, that's a central element, actually, of the comprehensive plan in chapter four, mobility.
I think we, at one time, looked at using this down by the airport, down by Mirana Airport also was, was a thought process at one point, too. And I'm happy that we kind of have this type of flexibility in our zoning. So any other questions? Okay. Seeing none, this is information only?
Wow, okay.
We appreciate it. Thank you, Evan. Have a good day.
Thank you, you too.
And that brings me to the part of the agenda that says adjourn. There you are.